Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody for coming tonight. Section two, a move that we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three, one. Anybody sign up to speak? Okay. Three, two. Holson Miller and McPherson update.
Well, Pat's not here today, so I get to do his construction update, so hopefully you can add a little more fanfare.
Just remember Dana White.
So, last time I did this, I did a couple of fun facts, so here's my one fun fact of the day. Everybody always asks me, we have the running track around the top of the gym, how long is it? Did the calculation today, it's just shy of an eighth of a mile. So, eight laps around that'll give you a mile, but I also did our academic loop, so a student to go all the way around that, it's about a fifth of a mile. So, you have a pretty nice big building, you can do some good track laps when it rains. Just to let you know, we kicked off our FFNE the other day, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. Danielle Mona and Randy sat down for a nice two-hour-long meeting, talking about every little thing that we could possibly think of for furniture. It was a six-page spreadsheet, it was a lot of fun. The next two months, we'll be meeting with all the departments to talk specific furniture for their different spaces and how those get to be used. And then on the 22nd, we have it set up that we are bringing 15 staff and 12 students down to the Holson Miller office to see a wide variety of desks that we actually house in our office from all the different, and talk about some different configurations. Because as you can see, the furniture up there is not the furniture that you've seen in your school now, but with technology, kids are having a lot more freedom, and technology's really changed what you call a desk anymore. We'll be talking about different things. In our academic wing, there's eight classrooms that are almost identical. Does that mean eight classrooms have to have identical furniture? Could we have two with tables, two with desks, and could we have four that are something completely different? What does that mean? Does that mean kidney-shaped tables, round tables? You know, it could be bean bags, I don't know. We have to talk to the teachers and see what kind of different teaching utensils that, how we can make furniture help them in their teaching. So, I'm gonna do Pat's little update for you. As you can see, here we are at the stadium, they've got the bleachers topped out. If you're not really excited about these bleachers, I think it's gonna be pretty cool, it's gonna create a very homey stadium and not this aluminum bleacher look. So, if you can see, there's the steps on the side where you see the gravel on the lower-right picture, there'll be red papers there, so you actually sit on that front stone and your feet will be on red papers. So, you've got that look. And then the steel that you see up in the upper-left is the press box, and along that big wall at the top of the visitor's stadium, we'll have a nice saying that, you know, the equivalent of the welcome to the jungle that's on the current stadium, but I think they've decided to do something different in the words.
That'll be a lot nicer than the, what we experienced on Friday for the visitor's side, so, yeah, that'll be nice.
We got through it.
We did.
They're setting this lights this week, the concession stands are getting the roofs put on this week, and they're starting some of the mechanical systems outside. They've started seating the soccer fields today. Up on the top left is the small, or is the big soccer field, which you can start to see the stadium lights on the far side, and then the lower-right picture is the smaller practice soccer field. And as you can see, there's gonna be a nice big fence, because you see the fence, the school in the background. So, if you kick that soccer ball hard enough, it's just gonna keep going down the hill. Baseball softball fields, they've got the concession stand going up out there, and then we've got the dugouts on the right. Got this nice dark block with a red band all the way around it, and some nice lancing red roof, it's gonna be pretty nice. They all have standing seam metal roofs out on the outbuildings. Site work, they're continuing to do curb gutter, and they've started the base courses of asphalt, they're hoping to have 80 to 85 percent of the parking lots complete by this winter, so with all that snow. And then the picture on the right is actually the tennis courts. We've always talked about, there's eight tennis courts, four up, then there's a 10-foot difference, and there's four down. That's what you're starting to see there, you see the four up, you see the big staircase, and there's four down. So, I think you're actually gonna have a pretty awesome state-of-the-art tennis facility out there. Now, we're in academic and administrative areas. They're doing a lot of the mechanical, they're starting to change some drywall, tape it. Got most of the brick and install, or brick and windows installed in this area of the building, and they're really trying to get it closed in, so as of November 1st, they can have some kind of temporary heat in there. They've had to do a lot of measuring to make sure all the casework's ordered. The picture on the upper-left is the learning stair, it's kind of the heart of the academic wing, and so you can see, it's got a big open space, it's a gathering space for about 100 kids. Got some big stair risers, it's kind of that informal presentation space, where you can kind of lounge on the stairs, or you can have a speaker at the bottom. It's also your main circulation stair for kids to travel between the different levels. And on the right-hand side, you're looking down one of the corridors, it's what we call the collaboration space. The corridor gets up to about 20 feet wide in this location, and when we do furniture and other things, we'll have a lot of furniture out here in the hallway, so this is where kids can do a lot of their collaboration projects. There'll probably be some soft seating, some tables, some high-top work areas, so that when teachers say, "Hey, let's go do some work and break up into your groups," they can go right outside their classroom, stay right in their hallway, but have some seating options that aren't just the desk or the red floor. The commons and the media center, they're starting to roof that. Again, they're continuing with mechanical and electrical, they're starting some of the interior walls, and a lot of brick and windows still have to be installed in this area. The picture on the left, they're starting to do the framing on the media center, that's the two-story volume that looks over the courtyard. And on the lower right, that is the view, when you walk in the front door, you overlook the commons, the commons is on level two, you enter on level three, so where there's big piles of gravel are, that'll be where all the students eat, and you've got that concourse to walk around the top. Here's a picture of the courtyard, this is looking through that wall of the commons. I think this is gonna be an absolutely beautiful space in someplace that I think they're gonna get a lot of use at. Out of, it does transfer from level two all the way down to level one, we go through the tunnel, so as you can see on the right, there's a series of winding paths, so it is ADA compliant, and anybody can do this. The big space in the middle is the learning stair that we talked about before, and again, we'll have a learning stair that comes out on the outside, so there'll be a concrete version of it. We've talked about fun activities of maybe do you do your football pep rally outside, have all your football players on the stands, and then have you have seating for your student body in your grassed courtyard area. Or you can also see, there's a space right outside where the lunchroom is, so that you could have tables and chairs outside. And the nice part is, this is a secured courtyard, so a kid can go out there, but they can't really leave campus. So, this is considered another big classroom, it's about half an acre in size. The Genesee locker rooms, they did complete the roof, they're starting to put the mechanical and electrical in. The interior walls for the storage in the track are about done, they're about 50 percent with the structural steel for the track, and they'll be working on the locker room walls this month. And the pictures that you see there, the one on the left, you can start to see the framework for the track in the two-story volume, you see that. Bleachers will go all along that wall, so you'll have that track, and the bleachers will come out. And in the picture on the lower right, you have a nice big hole in the middle of your gym, right here, that is 60 feet wide, and that'll have a skyfold door on it that folds up, so when there is a large gathering, whether it's graduation inside, you can put your stage, or you can put more chairs in that opening, and open up and have two gyms connected. On game night, you can shut that door, and you've got two separate gyms. Here's a swimming pool, they've been erecting steel this week, they're starting to roof, we'll be doing a mechanical-electrical, and the pool observation deck is complete. The observation deck is, we have all the bleachers for the pool up a hall level, so they are not on the pool deck, they're gonna get to view from above, so that's what this area is, there's bleachers that go up here and look down on the pool. Sorry for the pretty water, but there is water in the pool currently. Shop drum in the kitchen, they're starting to set steel in this area, starting to get the roofs on, interior wall, and, so these pictures are the roof going on over the kitchen, and then you've got from the outside, they're still got the braces up, because they don't have the structural steel for the roof up on the outside of the kitchen. And then the last one, the auditorium area, they're starting steel erection this month, and they'll start roofing hopefully later this month. The picture you're seeing here, this is the Lion Walk, so this divides the gym and the auditorium. This is the main walkway of how most students will get from their car into the heart of the building. There's this kind of a reveal, the floor doesn't go all the way to the wall, and along this wall will be a mural that goes floor to ceiling with the graphic, that's kind of the school representation graphic, it'll be floor to ceiling, so it's about 24 feet high, and it allows the bus riders to come in on level two, all the kids from their car to come in on level three and enter to the building. It's also where all your display cases for different athletics and academic awards will be, so it's kind of the heart and representation of this is our school, so we've always called it the Lion Walk. So, this is kind of bridging between your gym and your auditorium. So, hopefully that was a little more exciting than Pat's normal construction update.
Earlier on, you said you thought you knew where you were gonna put all the old photographs of the kids from the last 75 years. Have you thought any more about that?
We have a spot to do-
Dr. Begman, why can't I be able to click with those here?
Yeah, just like a mess, the left one, oh, the left. The good news is, is I can take control of it.
Okay.
We're using walkouts.
That video here is only two, but I'm pretty sure I'll be-
You're 50 percent.
Okay, does this one take it back as well as forward?
Yeah.
That was just good for you.
Yeah.
Dr. Begman gets me figured out. Just here, just myself here real quick, my name is Greg Ross, I'm with Opa Food Management, and I've been doing this for about eight years, I'm the vice president of the company, and what we do, we go around and take care of existing business as well as trying to expand our business a little bit. My background is not the food service, my background is active education. I've been a teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent of schools. I retired actually from Platte County School District, we're just near here. We had Opa for about 26 years, that's how I got hooked in with working with Opa. I have with me my wife, Sheila Ross, back here, she's gonna be part of the presentation. She's actually one of the experts in the company, worse so than I. She's been at the company for about 23 years, and she's the vice president of dietitian, she takes care of all the menuing and all the compliance issues. So, I'm gonna take you through a little bit about the background of the company, a little bit about the process of going to bid for food service, and then she's gonna talk a little bit about the menuing that we do and so on. So, feel free, I quit being formal, so ask questions as we go if you wish, or at any time. A little bit about Opa, it's a family-owned business, been in business for 36 years. We're located in Chesterfield, Missouri, so we're based out of, we have over 2,000 employees actually, and we work all over the states in which we serve. One thing about Opa that I think is unique is that they serve only K-12 public schools. A lot of our competition will do other things, they may serve schools, they may be businesses, nursing homes, whatever, but Opa Food Management only serves K-12 public schools. One thing that we specialize in is homestyle cooking, baking, scratch cooking, that's something that it seemed like when I started teaching back in the early 80s in the smaller schools, you saw a lot of, and then over time, it seems like we've kind of gotten away from that. That's one thing that Opa does a lot of, so Sheila will talk about that, the calzones, the breads, and all those things that we do, we do a lot of scratch cooking as a company. You can see where we do business, we have 106 districts in Missouri. To give you a little bit of perspective, in Missouri, there's probably about 130 to 140 school districts in the state of Missouri, out of 524, out of 524 is a contracted out food service. And we have 106 of those. We vary in size in Missouri from districts, they're as small as about 350 kids in the district to St. Joe, Missouri, which is 12,000. But our niche primarily has always been the 800, 1500, 2,000 range, we have a lot of districts that are in that size range. We have 21 school districts in the state of Kansas, we've only been in Kansas, this is starting our third year. When we started looking at Kansas, we were only four districts, and the whole state of Kansas contracted out food service. And I was the one that was kind of tapped about three years ago to start looking outside the state of Missouri, and we decided on Kansas first. It was my goal to double the size of Kansas, the first year, which I was able to do, we got Piper, Baserlinwood, Bonner Springs, which are all here near you, and then we got them in the middle. And so, year one, we got four. The next year, we gained 10 districts, and it wasn't so much due to my efforts, but the four that we got, they'd talk so positive about the program, one thing or another, that we gained 10, so they were the best-sells people we had, were actually the superintendents that we got for first year. And then we got a few more this year, I think eight or nine, so we ended up having 21 out of 25 of the Kansas school districts. And so, the growth right now's been really good for Opa and the state of Kansas. Right now, we have, we're primarily on this side of the state, up and down, everywhere from Troy, which I'll show you here in a second. Kind of populate this a little bit. We're, I guess who we are in Missouri, and then also in Kansas, the northernmost one in Kansas, I think it's probably Troy Riverside area, we have both of those school districts, 350 being the smallest, and then our largest school district would be Andover, which I think is 52, 5300 kids. And so, you kind of see where we started, we tried to start close to Missouri, it was my goal, we want to be successful, and so we want to stay close to our infrastructure and then work out. You can see what we're kind of getting now, we have one school district down as far west as Pratt, and right now, we've already done feasibility studies in Syracuse and Yucatan, and they're all anxious and ready to go here mid-year if we get the bid, and so that's way out there compared to where we've been as far as in Kansas, western Kansas, so I think there's gonna be quite a bit of interest out there as well. And then I also had on there, that I slipped by, we have three school districts, we just started looking at Oklahoma this year, we have three school districts in Oklahoma, and then we gained just one, we gained one in Arkansas this year. And so, that's kind of the states that we're focusing on right now. Missouri's kind of getting built out actually, you know, we have 106 to 140 school districts, and so a lot of our growth is occurring in the other states right now. Some of the benefits of Opa. When we look at school districts, most school districts, or a lot of school districts, more and more are getting where they're sliding more and more into the red on their food service, and it's requiring them to subsidize their food service accounts with education dollars. Kansas is going through, as well as other states, I think Kansas is actually probably worse than Missouri, unprecedented times on their revenue streams financially. And a lot of school districts, and I've been through this personally as a superintendent of schools, where you had to cut, you know, substantial dollars, and in all school districts, it doesn't matter where you are, 70 to 75 percent of your expenditure budget is tied to the people. School is a people business, and so it's really hard to find money without affecting people. This is one place that you can find money without affecting people, you can actually improve your program and preserve the staff that you have, and save money, and improve your program at the same time. Most times, whenever you start cutting, you're, again, taking people's jobs, and then you're hurting the programs that you offer. This is a unique opportunity. So, the purchasing power is one of the things that we bring to districts, we serve about 26 million meals a year, so there's a lot more profit margin in food than what you might be aware of. For instance, at St. Joe's School District, again, they're a pretty large district, they're about 12,000, they were losing 600,000 a year in food service. 600,000 a year in the red they were subsidizing. Year one, we got them last October, we have them turn around, projected based upon the present participation numbers, to be 300 and some thousand at the end of the line. A million-dollar turnaround just due to the St. Joe's School District. So, a lot of the smaller school districts, you can see 30, 40, 50, 100,000, those kind of monies wrapped up in the food savings that you can have.
Is that on food and soup?
That is on food.
Million dollars in food soup.
Uh-huh.
That's pretty impressive.
Uh-huh, yeah. And Sheila will talk about it, everybody wants to think that the savings on food comes from having lesser quality food, the opposite is true, and we'll talk about it here in a little bit. We charge on a per-trade basis, so it's important that the food quality is high, if not higher than what the school district was before we came in, to have more kids eating. And it always felt like the kids probably vote with their pocketbooks, if they don't like the food, they're not gonna eat it, if they do like it, they are gonna participate in the program. And our purchasing power allows us to buy higher-quality foods than what most districts can afford to buy, so it's kind of the reverse. Another thing that happens with Opa when they come in, it's not uncommon to see an 8 to 10 percent participation growth. When we come in, we like to offer choices, so we have scratch cooking combined with choices. At the elementary level, we like to offer three reimbursable choices to the kids, and at the middle school and high school, depend upon the facilities and so on, if we're able to, we have as high as five to six reimbursable choices. And so, the kids have a lot more choices than most places whenever we go in and talk to the districts, and with more choices, you have the opportunity for more kids liking what you're serving. We also help with keeping the school districts in compliance on federal, state, and local regulations. Really, the two biggest areas that make our phones ring right now is, again, schools sliding into the red and purchasing power with the new program financially, and it's also what's happened the last two or three years on the mandates, on the federal legislation with the compliance issues and everything else. It used to be, when I was a superintendent, if DESI came through, which was our state agency, and we were out of compliance on something, they'd slap you on the hand, you'd write a corrective plan of action, say, "See you in five years." But what they're saying now is, you're gonna come in, and if you're out of compliance, you're gonna withhold federal dollars, and so it's gonna be, it's gonna be very costly for districts. And as superintendents become more aware of the potential danger in that, they're reaching out for help. And when we come in with a school district, we're not taking over anything, as we'll talk about here a little bit, with partnering with the school district, it's a partnership is what it is. And so, we help the districts through the menuing and everything else to stay in compliance. Again, menu development, Sheila will talk about that, we take care of all the menuing, making sure it's in compliance and all those kind of things. We help with any state or USDA that's maybe going through, we do a lot of staff training, and then also, we provide the oversight. Okay, I'm gonna step aside here just for a minute, but Sheila.
If you look in your packets, you'll see some copies of our menus, and these are our copies of our current menu, our September menu. There are three different age grade groups, there's a K through 5, a 6 through 8, and a 9 through 12. And then you'll also see a staff special menu that's in there, that is for our staff members, so I'll walk you through that just a little bit. So, all of our menus are compliant with the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act, that went into effect in 2012, with the lunch requirements, breakfast last year in '13, and then smart snacks in school this year. We're serving right now as many as six reimbursable lunch choices or more, depending on what your facilities allow. We also offer a fresh fruit and vegetable bar, I'll have a picture of that, that is available to all of our reimbursable lines, so no matter what choice they pick, or if they have a salad bar, students can all go through that fresh fruit and vegetable bar. We have four reimbursable breakfast choices daily, we offer an all-a-part program that meets the new smart snacks and school guidelines. We have a chef on staff, we spend a lot of time every month working with our chef to develop some features every month. We also take care of special dietary needs, we have a lot of students now with peanut allergies, diabetes, gluten intolerances, we have a database that our nurses, our parents, any staff members can access to have all the nutrition fact labels and ingredients for every item that we serve to help determine what choices a student would need to select for their dietary needs. The menus that you see, we print those every month for students to take home with them in their backpacks. We also work with your IT director to have those also posted on your school website, and we also have launched a mobile app where you can access your menus from your cell phone as well, so that's available. Some of the menu highlights, if you look down in the corner of your menu and throughout the menu, you'll see some little icons that are up here on the screen. We have farm-to-school partners, this has been an initiative that we've been working on for several years, that bringing farm-fresh products into our school districts, so we really wanted to support our local growers in the communities that we serve. Right now, we're offering about five different varieties of apples that are grown in this area. We serve some fresh blackberries last week from a farm in the Kansas City area. We have a hydroponic grower down in southern Missouri, where we have the living heads of lettuce, cucumbers, green peppers, all year round. So, that's a program we're really actively involved in and trying to expand all the time in new areas. We're also compliant with- We're also compliant with Healthier US School Challenge, which is a national initiative. And then the menu symbols that you see are Smart Choice entree items that are lower in fat. Anything with a little house beside it, those are our homemade items that we make. And then the whole brain rich items, all the basket of goodies that you guys just passed around. Those you'll notice on the menus, those are the serving sizes that the students will receive. And all of the items are on our menus. So those are our actual recipes that we will work with your staff and train them to be able to bake those for your students and staff here. The apple is our farm-fresh product. We have a peanut on our menu to note anything that's made with peanuts. And then the pork symbol, we have more and more people wanting to know which products contain pork. So we added that as well. This is a picture of our fresh fruit and vegetable bar that I mentioned earlier, where students can go through the line and select fresh fruit and vegetables from the bar. Gives them a really good variety. We're really working with students to expand the fruits and vegetables that they can consume. Gives them a chance to eat the things that they do like and maybe branch out a little bit and try something new. Greg mentioned about our partnerships. A lot of times when we do come in, we talk about savings in food cost. And we do get a lot of questions about the quality of our food. So I have up here some of our partners. You'll see General Mills, Tyson's, we serve Heinz ketchup, Prairie Farms, Campbell's, Lamb Wesson, Sarah Lee. Some of the names of the products that we use. Since we serve so many meals, we're able to spend a lot of time partnering with these companies where their chefs will come in, show us their new products. If we like them, we send them out to our schools, let the students do the taste testing. They're the ones that really know which items that they like. So we spend a significant amount of time looking for products, looking for quality products that meet all of the new Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act guidelines and putting things out there that the students really like. I mentioned earlier about the USDA compliance. We started about three or four years in advance of the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act going into effect in two thousand and twelve. And that was through compliance with Healthier US School Challenge. So by the time we got to two thousand and twelve, we had very little changes that we needed to make in our menus. We had already started on breakfast. As we started school this year, all the grains had to be whole brain rich along with the first sodium target. We have another sodium target coming here in a couple of years and we're working toward that. And the Smart Snacks in School, which just started as well, which is our a la carte vending, school stores, and fundraisers. So we've actively worked on those. Healthier US School Challenge is one of the programs that we're really excited about. This is a national recognition. It is a standard that is above and beyond the Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act. So the menus that you have in your hands not only meet Healthy, Hunger-Free Kids Act, they go a step beyond to meet Healthier US School Challenge. We have thirty-one school districts right now that are bronze level certified and two with silver. And we have about twenty more that are sitting at USDA waiting to be approved. So as long as your school district has the nutrition education provided to students and the physical education, all the menus meet the guidelines. So it's quite an honor for your school to be recognized. And we help you walk through that certification and guide you with that. Some additional opportunities that we provide. As we go into school districts, all schools have some different needs. So we really partner with you to try to determine what your needs are and how we can benefit your students and staff. In many, several of our schools, we're doing the universal breakfast program now where every student eats breakfast for free. We have breakfast in the classroom as an opportunity. It's been very successful. We do box lunches for field trips or, you know, some teachers want to grill at the park in the spring when things are nice. So we can really provide any service that your school district is looking for, for meals. After-school meals and snacks for extracurricular activities. Some of the band directors or athletic directors ask us to make coolers of food for them to take on the buses if they need to leave or a game or a band competition or something like that. So we're more than willing to do that. We have some school districts participating in the supper program. So we're actually feeding three meals a day in those school districts. We offer a wide variety of catering. And we've also been working with our school districts to provide health and wellness shares for your students, for your families. Where they can come in, we have booths, we partner with your community to bring people in and really teach students about proper hygiene, hand washing, healthy snacks when they get home from school, healthy beverages, all those types of things, physical activity. And those have been very successful and good nutrition education for the students. Any questions about the menus or anything before I turn it back over to Greg?
How do we better understand a reimbursable, what does that mean?
All right. So if you look on your menu, you will see a variety of items offered. So there are five components that we have to offer every day. So you have your meat and alternate, which would be your protein type of item, grains, fruits, vegetables, and milk. And there are a variety of guidelines that have to be followed. For example, with the vegetable, we have to offer different vegetable subgroups like red or orange, dark green, other vegetables, that type of thing. So there are a lot of different guidelines within those five components that we have to meet. There are also restrictions for minimum number of calories you can have and maximum number of calories. We now have a sodium restriction. We cannot go over that. That includes all your meal plus incondiments. So ketchup, mustard, gravy, butter, any of those things, cream cheese on a bagel, all of those are included in that calorie cap. Fat requirements, all those types of things.
So answer the question, the five components?
So five components, and then we work through those to meet all those guidelines for the meals.
So if you're outside of those components, it's not reimbursable?
Correct. All those guidelines that I just talked about for the five components, the different vegetable subgroups that you have to meet during the week, the calorie minimums, calorie maximum, fat requirement, yes. When you have a state agency review, they will come in and make sure that you meet all of those requirements. So these menus are averaged over a week to meet all of those guidelines that I just mentioned. And that is what your federal and state reimbursement is based on. It has to meet all of those guidelines for it to be considered a reimbursable meal.
If it's not a reimbursable meal, it would be considered a la carte. So that'd be generally for middle school and high school, you might have a la carte where the kids can go just pick out, you know, whatever they want randomly in the way of food. That would be a la carte item. But to go through and get the Class A or whatever meal, the reimbursable meal, then they have to meet X number of those components. And that's what's really, from probably a nutritional standpoint and also from a reimbursable financial standpoint, the best thing for everybody concerned. That's just my own biased opinion on that. But beyond that, they have a la carte they can go through and they'll get it. Generally, in an elementary, they just have reimbursable, they don't have a la carte in an elementary. So it'd be all reimbursable.
And all the meals listed on this menu are reimbursable meals. That's the meal that the student will be able to take with your regular meal price.
I don't think there's any advantage of having that one as reimbursable.
Right, right, exactly. So all of our menus are designed to be reimbursable.
You know, for example, based on Ed Wood, Mr. Howard superintendent there. When we, when he first was looking at our program and they decided to partner with us, they had a lot of a la carte, more a la carte than what he would like to have seen. And generally, if you have high a la cartes, because you have poor choices off the reimbursable line. So it drives kids to the a la carte, which I don't think is probably overall as healthy and as good for the kids. And so one of the things that David wanted to do, David Howard, superintendent there, he wanted to improve his reimbursable meals. So it shifted kids from eating the a la carte at the high school and the middle school over to eating those reimbursable meals, which is better financially for the school district. As well as in his opinion, in my opinion, most, you know, it's really probably better for the kids. It's a better, more rounded meal. So the reimbursable meals, the choices really help drive the kids to something more desirable, that they're complying with the reimbursable. And we took all of the ones earlier, Platte County School District, and their eyes just went like that because of the shotgun approach. Everything else is really, really nice. And kids are able to kind of get what they want. And they can also go through and get all they want on the fruit and vegetable bar. And they can really have a really nice meal that way.
Probably more information you want to know, but that's kind of the difference between a la carte and a reimbursable. On the bid process, just talk a little bit about the bid process because anytime you involve USDA or the federal government, there's always hoops to jump through. And one of the things to kind of lead you through, one of the things we do as a company that I don't think any other companies do. When we come in and we call on a superintendent, talk to the superintendent, one of the things we like to do is what we call a feasibility study. Your district has already done a feasibility study. And what that is, is just basically a collection of data that is your data. And we kind of crunch those numbers to see if you were to go with us, could we help you financially? And that has happened here and that turned out as a green light, as we might call it, turned out positive for your district. There are times when I have to go back and tell districts, sorry, we can't help you. Every district is different depending on how efficiently they're buying, their size. There's all kinds of factors that lead into whether or not for good candidates to contract out. But I think that's a very important first step versus getting everybody involved in the bid process and then waiting to get everybody stirred up and then getting bids in and finding out what really works for you. So I think that's a very, that's a very good way to handle it on the feasibility stage. So again, we've done that, that's turned out positive in this district. The second step, if the district would choose to do so, would then would be go out and bid. It has to be a formal setting where you have to go out and bid with other companies that are interested. When you're going out to bid, there's some things you need to kind of determine within that model. And one of those is going to be the employee model. How do you want to treat your employees? In other words, do you want to keep all the employees on the district payrolls they are now? Do you want to have all the employees move over to the food service, contracted food service management company? Or do you want to do something kind of in between? And there is no right or wrong way. It all comes down to how the district wants to do that. I have my bias, but again, it comes down to how you want to do this as a district. What a lot of districts do on that particular model, they, and not all, but most, they will elect to keep the employees on their side. And then as there's turnover of staff, as those staff members leave on their own over a period of time, that new people are hired back or hired back by the contracted food service management company. And what that does for you as a district, number one, it allows you to upfront recruit the savings on your food because all the savings is on the back of the food, not the employees. And then as you have turnover of staff and the contracted food service company hires replacement people from your community, then you start getting out from underneath the health insurance, the retirement, workers' comp, all those, social security, all those things that you pay down on your benefit side. And so all that starts coming back to your program to help you stay more healthy in the area.
The other benefit of that, Greg, is that it doesn't interrupt their own personal retirement.
Absolutely.
Because there are papers eligible where they say, I was a cook here for thirty years. I can retire next year or the year after. That, we've talked a little bit about that. That would be one of the things I would recommend when you keep on going, let that change through your progression.
And that's what I would do if I were setting after that, you see as well. From a compassion standpoint, that's best for your employees, it's still good for the district. Some districts get their backs against the wall. They're looking at cutting a lot of staff. And so they don't have the time to get that portion, so they may push all the staff initially so they can recruit everything they can upfront. From a business standpoint, that's the best. From a compassion standpoint, it's best to do exactly as Dr. Becky has suggested. And that's exactly what I would do in that same situation. So those are things that you need to determine as a district if you elect to go to bid. A little bit about how we charge, we charge on a per-tray basis. So every reimbursable trade we were talking about is how we charge. So the charge, the reimbursable trade count that you give to KSDE each month is the same number that is used for us to bill you on. So the number that we bill you on the reimbursable trade count is your number, not a little bit's number, if that makes sense. And so when we give a number, we're going to give a per-tray charge. And then each year, it's going to go up, but how it goes up is based upon what KSDE, based upon CPI, allows it to go up. And the past two to three years, that's been in the two percent range, which is a heck of a lot less than what food has actually been going up. And so whenever you get to see what your initial savings are from the bid, you can count the factors when you're kind of locked in for the next five years, that your growth on the food cost is going to be probably half, if not more, than what it would be if you were on your own. And then again, the five-year fixed pricing, we're kind of locked into you, but you're not locked into us. Every year about February or March, when I was at Platte County, I would give them an extension letter from Opa food management. And then I could take it to board and the board would vote on it. If they were happy, they'd vote for another year. If they weren't happy, you don't have to. And so it's voted every year, as long as you like what you're seeing. Any questions on that in the process? Again, that's a USDA-driven process. To go through the bid process, it takes you about eight to ten weeks, having to jump through all the hoops. And so it's very structured. It's very structured. Okay, here's, I think it's a big one, why I have this on this. I not only have been a school superintendent, but I guess I didn't get enough of it because now I'm a school board member in my community. And so I fully understand, you're saying on both sides, how important it is for boards and for superintendents to maintain district control. It seems like everything, you know, throughout the years, has always tried to erode that, whether it's state, federal, or whatever the case may be. And so, you know, district control is very important. This is your educational system, and so you need to maintain that control. When you contract a food service, it's really not the same as contracting out for buses or other type of services. When you contract out for buses, and I don't remember if you guys do or not, but if you do that, generally, all the buses are owned by the company you're contracting with. And you pay for that service. But if the district wants to get back into the busing business, then they have to buy all those buses at some point, eighty-five thousand or ninety thousand dollars to pop to get back in because it can be very costly for them. When you contract food service, we're only billing you on your reimbursable trade count. You're keeping all of your staff on your own side, if that's the model you elect to follow. There's no risk that way with the staff or anything else. So their benefits stay intact, their salaries stay intact, their hours stay intact. Everything stays intact. Nothing changes for your employees. The only thing that's going to change for your employees is going to be the menus, the recipes that they use. That's it. And so that's a little bit different. From a standpoint, who sets your student bill prices? The board sets those now and it will continue to set those. That does not change. District still maintains control of the revenue streams, your local, state, and federal. That money flows just like it does now. You guys still maintain control of your equipment and facilities. So whatever policies you have, whatever practices you use, whatever processes you use are unchanged. We partner with you guys. This is your district, just like when Opa was at Platte County for twenty-six years. If somebody would have said this is Opa's, you know, Opa's program, I probably would have been upset. No, this is the Platte County's program. This would be your program. So on equipment and facilities, due to the fact that we could be here one year and out the next, nothing changes on that. You have line items right now in your expenditure budget for cattle outlay and everything else, supplies and so on. You would still maintain You would still maintain those in your budget. The director would make requests through the purchase order process that you have in place. And then whoever would be their immediate supervisor would either approve it or reject it, just like they do now. So nothing would change with that. But you guys would be responsible, the district is responsible for purchasing the equipment, of keeping that type of stuff. District approves new hires, including the director of nutrition. I was talking about the models. The only person that has to be an open employee, and every company is like this, if you want to contract out. But if you want to contract out, the only person that has to be on the contracted food service side is the director. That's the only one that's really not given as a choice, because number one, we as you, probably that is the most important person in the program. It's like having a press group. You have great teachers, but if you don't have that press group or the coach or whoever to bring that effort together, great things probably aren't going to happen. And so the director has to be on our side. He's also the only person that we would have here every day to make sure that the promise that we made to the district is being held, held to. So that person has to be on OPA payroll. Now, what happens, 99 times out of 100, if the district has a director that they like and they want to maintain him, then that person will be maintained. They'll just simply come over and your paycheck will start coming from OPA instead of from an actual school district, for example. The cooks, again, we already discussed that. You guys can keep all the cooks or however you want to on the cooks. District sets policies and procedures. Again, that's unchanged. What, however you charge kids going through right now remains unchanged. There's no software requirements or anything else. So simply what happens is that you would enter into an agreement. We're going to take care of all your menuing, all the oversight. We're going to take care of the purchasing of the food, help you on the savings of dollars, offer more choices, keep you in compliance, and do all those things for that one per tray charge. There's no nickel and dime. There's no extra charges. There's nothing. So what you see is what you get. It's, it's a little straightforward. And the last slide, I think this is important. I think our company, OPA does this probably as well, but not better than anybody. Whenever we go into a district, and I tell home offices this all the time, there's actually three or four exsuperintendents who work for OPA. They hire exsuperintendents to do my job. And the reason is, we kind of know, we, we know superintendents and we know what goes on at school districts. But one of the things that they do a good job of is, is throwing in the support and providing the support to your cooks. We cannot be successful if we just go into a school district and say, oh, here's the recipes, you know, do them. And as we tell people in our organization all the time, if we stub our toes, then that word's going to get around real quick. So it's real important when we go into a school, OPA going into a school, that we do a great job. And I tell them all the time, good news travels fast and bad news travels faster. And when you're dealing with superintendents, they're like a fraternity. They talk all the time. And so if we don't do a good job in every district, it, it's all going to fall apart for, for OPA. And so we, we as a company spend a lot of time in making sure the proper support is in place. And so if the board was to vote us in, we have people that would come in almost immediately and start working with the cooks and one thing or another, and adjusting some things along with them. And then when school actually transitions to our recipes, we have enough schools in the area that we actually pull from those schools kitchen managers and directors for a period of a few days, where they're in every one of your attendance centers, where they're working with your bakers and everyone else that is, is involved, to make sure that they feel comfortable with what they're doing. Then they will eventually kind of receive back to your districts. We have what we call a regional director of operations. They will stay in place for a period of several weeks. And then they'll kind of back off a little bit too, but there's a tremendous amount of support, monthly training and everything else that goes with it. So that's a big part of what makes, makes our retention so strong. I believe our retention rate right now is 99.7%. Once we get a district and we're partnering with a district, we hardly ever lose them. The oldest district that we have is the first district we got is Purdue Missouri. We've had them for 32 years. And so if you think about the fact that the board, every 32, you know, every year for 32 years has had to vote us in, and every five years they have to go to rebid and we're still there, I think that speaks, speaks well to the company. So. What questions might you have? Again, we've taken quite a bit of time and I appreciate that, but what questions might you have? If you can, please you want to make the answer for me.
So your food service is all just a per-tray charge?
It's a per-tray charge.
And, and what for what, what might you, what percentage of?
That varies. It varies upon, it kind of varies upon the size you are. And the reason why it varies on that is because as a company, every company has to make X amount of dollars too. And so they have to look to see how much they can save in the food. The more meals that you have that you can spread all that cost over, the lower the meal price can be. So if you go into a small district, it's really hard for that to work because of time to company, case what they need to have, they've taken all the savings out of food. They can save, you know, but a district of 300, 350, they don't serve enough food to have a lot of profit margin. Time to save on the food. And so it really kind of makes a difference on how large the district is. It kind of, it, it makes a difference on what their, what their processes have been, how aggressive they've been on, on bidding, their free and reduced counts. There's a lot of things that kind of go into what can make that favorable.
So what range would be what? I mean, you have to say, Joe, the thousands.
Yeah, I, I tell you, truth, I can't, yeah, I can't even tell you.
They have some idea, don't you?
Probably the twos.
Two bucks a, a tray?
Yeah, the twos, probably. I don't know exactly what, because they do vary quite a bit each time. And so what you have, what you look at is the, the trade charge and then also what you would get in the way of your local, state, and federal reimbursement and so on. And then what we do, we do a feasibility study, like we did for this district. We already kind of know what the savings would be for this district. And so that's kind of done in the feasibility study. So whenever we give Dr. Bailey some numbers, those numbers were conservative numbers that we felt like we can hit. And the truth of the matter is, when you go into a formal bid, it, it has to get sharper. So there, there's some savings in this district. And when you start factoring in what food growth would be versus what it could be with, you know, the two, two and a half percent, the participation increase, and then turnover of staff over the years, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money that's being spent that doesn't need to be in this district food service.
Sounds like it's a little growth area.
It is a growth area.
So what would be some of the major competitors?
The national companies would be Chartwells, Aramark, Sedexo. Those would be national sized companies. We'd probably bid, probably several of those would bid on a district your size. When we bid at Baser-Lenwood, Piper, and Bonner Springs, the 2,000, 2,500, we saw Chartwells and we saw Sedexo. We saw some smaller players too. But you'll, you'll attract a couple of national companies to, knock on wood. Anytime we face them at Andover, Augusta, El Torre, though, all the schools where they might come, we've prevailed. That's why we have 21 to 25. But I would expect to see them here competing for this business. You get into a smaller district under 2,000, you may not see either of them. You, in Kansas, you may see Topher as well. They kind of compete with our niche. Sometimes the smaller schools, Topher will show up, but the national companies will not.
You had a nice time talking, oh, three or four years ago, about, you know, the feasibility. And one of the things that's helped facilitate is the similar, religious changes at the state and in Kansas. Kansas hasn't been really consistent. There's still some at the state level, and you're continuing to be active. But now we have smaller programs. The plan is to let you, we're trying to digress this information. And next month, I'll bring in some more information, let you look at it and look whether you want to look at bidding. The nice thing about bidding in Kansas too is at any point, before we accept a bid, we're checking that. We have some time. I've had a long time to digest this information. We still, we still have some time frames that we're stuck on, because we're looking a little bit weird.
As Dr. Bailey said, when we started three years ago, KSD, Kansas only had four. And so they were pretty rigid. They weren't allowing things that Missouri, Oklahoma, other states allow that have even those as federal programs. USDA should be the same everywhere, but the states can also impose additional requirements. And so when we first started in Kansas, they were making all school districts bid at the same time, from January until May. They, they sprung it out. They made the process longer than it had to be. They wouldn't let you start until January. It had to conclude basically that you're May or June for a vote, and then you had to start in August. They didn't want anybody to start mid-year. In Missouri, you can start whenever you want. Oklahoma, you can start whenever you want. And as a superintendent, I'd be screaming if somebody told me I could start whenever I want, because it's best for my kids, it's best for my district. Why are you making me go another eight, nine months? Since then, Dale Dennis has allowed some of the districts, as they've requested, to go whenever they want, to go mid-year or whenever they want during the year. The other change, so that's one change. That's a big step forward for Kansas. The other big step forward for, for Kansas is that when we first started three years ago, they were not allowing employees to transition. In other words, you had to make a decision. You stuck with it for five years. So if you decided you want to keep all the employees, you kept them for five. If they left, you had to hire back anybody on your side, which you can still do, but they forced you to do that. Or if you moved all your staff, you moved your staff. But they didn't allow the transition, but they now allow the transition, which is a great thing for school districts, because unless you keep your existing cooks that came here for a very specific reason, to maintain their, their current terms of employment, but then as they leave, then you can hire people back, OPA can or whoever. They can hire back on their side. You can free up the benefits back to the district side, which could be in a district this size, it's fairly substantial. It can be fairly substantial. So those are two big hurdles that Kansas has kind of overcome. So they're, they're, they're evolving, and that's good. So like I said, right now, there's 20, there's 25 districts that do it. We have 21 to 25. And, you know, we're getting an eight to 10 a year, it seems like. A big part of us is like the data powers and everybody else around it, you know, they're happy. And as long as they're happy, they're talking to other superintendents. And again, a lot of the programs are running in the red. And when you're looking to cut dollars, it's easier to do it here, cut some dollars, and also improve your program versus take a teacher out of the classroom and work per something, so. Or a custodian or whoever, so. So, yeah, there's some real losses. Anything else?
So I take it from what you said, that when you are paying the employee, there are no fringe benefits?
There are fringe benefits. There are fringe benefits. We offer 401ks, company match. We offer, we offer a health, but it's not as comprehensive as what a school district would offer. And so if we had employees hired in, they're going to be kept about a 30-hour, under the 30-hour threshold. So we offer more of a basic level of health insurance to those people, to the cooks that we would hire. And then, and then they would also get, like I said, a 401k match. And then what we also do for them during the summer when they're not working, we let them file for unemployment so they can also collect unemployment over the summer, where a school would not allow that to happen. A school would contest that. And so that's kind of how that works with, with the others. Now, the director that comes to our side, they have health insurance that would rival the schools. They would get the same level of health insurance that Sheila gets as the vice president of our company. I maintain my health insurance still through the Platte County School District. I will never let that go for obvious reasons. And her health insurance a lot of times is better than mine on certain things. And so the director has excellent plus 401ks and everything else on the cooks. We offer less of the health insurance, but with the 401k and so on, so. But that, but again, that's a condition upon new people being hired in, just like if they went down to 7-Eleven or anywhere else. You know, they know, take the job, exactly what it's going to pay, the conditions, the hours and everything else. I will say, we don't ever have a problem finding replacement workers that are good, because if we, we couldn't, that would hurt us, because if, if it hurt the district, they're not going to be happy. We're not going to have a job. So we have to treat employees well, you know, at the same time too, so. If the employees would all stay on your side, nothing would change, nothing would change for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. So we took so much out. We appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. 4.1, application certificate or payments.
Solid check verified, we're in lock and load.
Maybe that we have approved the pay application and certificate payment as presented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 6.5, everybody get a chance to read the building's grounds and equipment reports? That's great stuff, man. Yes. Curriculum, 6, curriculum and instruction administrative reports. Everybody get a chance to read those? 7, 7.1, school bans for plus items.
For us to dispose of or trade any kind of property requires the board to declare a surplus. What's different about band instruments and so forth is that a lot of times we can get trade in. Whereas a piece of weed cutter or something like that, generally, you just do a seal at the end, because we're not trying to replace it. It still works. We still use it. But band, this is pretty common, declaring certain instruments surplus. Four, the rocks of weed, I can't remember, this, this would be in a B-flat French horn. Not commonly used.
Or something is there, you're told this.
Yeah.
Maybe that we approve the list of bicycle ban items and surplus as presented? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 7.2, leaf, dental, dental toothbrush.
1,872 kids. That's pretty good.
So can we primarily at the elementary and middle?
Primarily, yeah.
I'm not sure if it went, how far up it went through.
We, we just keep going up until we run out.
Maybe we accept the grant for 8,000, for 1,872 adult dental toothbrush kits as presented? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 7.3, LEAS site council bylaws update.
Each site council has a set of bylaws that generally they're put together and established and they're approved once. And then each year, the board approves that membership, those people that cover it, members of the site council. Evidently, they did some minor editing and with that, they're recorded. Well, we have time. Some of you have been on site councils. So you're pretty familiar with how they run. With that, it's, there's no big surprises. I mean, it's pretty, pretty much standard. And I recommend that for the people.
That I, maybe that we have approved the updated LEAS site council bylaws update as presented? Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 7.4, target take charge.
All donations, grants, and gift cards are borne. This one is 3, 323, 34.
You'll see those on our signs every now and then inside the, it's good.
I haven't, I don't recall seeing a target one before. I've seen Walmart.
Take it. Maybe that we accept the target take charge of education donation in the amount of $323.34. hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents as presented?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move that we, move to executive session to discuss personal students' negotiations for twenty minutes?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move that we set the resignation return as presented?
Second.
Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight point three, move that we approve the appointments and transfers as presented?
Second.
Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight point four, a move that we approve the following supplementals. Deborah Hutton as the assistant debate coach, Casey McCord as the assistant debate coach, Casey McCord also as the assistant forensics, Martez Wesley as the assistant high school girls' basketball coach, Marcus Vaughn as the assistant high school girls' basketball coach.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight point five, move that we approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen out of, out of district students as presented?
Second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eight point six, move that we approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen substitute teacher list as presented?
Second.
Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move that we back, a move that we...
Could I just, a little reminder about the next board meeting?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Thirteen.
We'll have food, so, you're up there at five, everyone will get you done by six fifteen, six thirty, get some over here. It'll be fun. And we'll, we can't invite, you know, the whole world, and we'll put together a good list, fifty, sixty, two, three, four, five.
Awesome. A move, we adjourn?
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you.